Welcome to the City of Claussen's meeting for Tuesday, April 4th. This meeting is called to order. Today, we have the honor of having three scouts from Troop 1615 here, and I would like to invite them up to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Will you tell us your names before you go away? So speak into the microphone and tell us who you are.
I am Alec.
I am Colin.
I'm Joey.
Thank you. And these fine gentlemen are working on merit badges, so here to attend our council meeting tonight. The next item is the invocation, so please bow your heads with me. Father, we ask for your direction and guidance today and all days for the healing of our land, the needs of others, protection for our military, and direction for our elected leaders. Guide us with wisdom and understanding. Grant friendships to all of our neighbors. Let us welcome others in need. Amen. Row call, please.
Mayor Loobz?
Here.
Councilmember Eris?
Here.
Councilmember Horton?
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Here.
Councilmember Woolley?
Here.
On the agenda, we're going to remove Line Items 6 and 7. One is a legislative update from our state representative who wasn't able to be here tonight, and a presentation about an event that wasn't planned. The next item on the agenda is a consent agenda, and there's one item tonight that's approving the minutes from the last council meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved as listed.
Support.
Comments? Row call.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobz?
Yes. The next item is a presentation and update on the proposed ordinance changes from the city prosecutor. We actually have two, and one's here tonight. Our city prosecutors will discuss the proposed ordinances, and then it will be up for first reading at an upcoming council meeting.
Good evening. Thank you for the invitation tonight. My name is Eric Getz from the firm of Getz-Nushey. We work closely with John Kingsup in the prosecution of Claussen matters. We had some interest from council about reviewing some ordinances, some that should probably be repealed, others that may need modification. That's why I'm here tonight. Items 46.5 to 46.9 have all been unanimously discussed with Mr. Kingsup and Mr. Nushey and myself for repeal, which includes fortune telling, spitting in public, borrowing from students, radio and TV interference, and pagers and electronic devices in school. We found all these things to be somewhat outdated and really don't need to be on current laws on our books anymore. We also had some other matters for repeal which dealt with careless use of a bow and arrow, backing into parking spaces, bicycle licensing, and just general provisions regarding bicycles. I found it kind of interesting that one of these provisions, our chief, Harry Anderson, would have to personally be involved in some of these matters, which I thought maybe a good thing, but not so good for Harry. So we didn't think those were necessary anymore either. We have some ordinances that we looked at that we're not going to change, and this is after discussion with John Kingsup, Harry Anderson, Scott Sorbello, and Mr. Nushey. False alarms, we reviewed for a long time and looked at that really closely, decided the current process right now that's being implemented by the Claussen police, a deal with that is fine, and the ordinance, the way it is, is working in a way that Chief Anderson finds is effective. So I don't want to step on Chief Anderson's toes. If he finds the current ordinance is working properly and the methodology of enforcing it is working properly, then we don't want to have any kind of change to that. The stalking statute, we looked at in depth. All the language in the stalking statute is mirroring the state law and current law on the matter. The language is fine. It mirrors language you'll see in the standard PPO orders that you'll see in most circuit courts. The language is fine and effective and not, in our opinion, to be vague, and we find it to be enforceable. Medical marijuana ordinances, we didn't touch at all. We had a lengthy discussion about that, and it's one of those situations where you open the door and that kind of ordinance is, you can never close the door again. And we want to see how that kind of plays out in surrounding communities with respect to allocation of law enforcement resources, dollars spent by the city to try and monitor and enforce any kind of laws in this area. So we want to have kind of a wait-and-see approach with that before we make any recommendations regarding that. The menacing statute was updated with more specific language. The assault and battery ordinance was updated with more specific language, and we also had more specific language added to the purchase and sale of tobacco products. Those ordinances all were updated with additional language. If you're curious, the specific language with the tobacco ordinances were 46.3, Subpart C, the penalties. We turned this into a civil infraction instead of a misdemeanor for smoking on school property. We all felt collectively that smoking on school property being a misdemeanor was a bit extreme of a penalty for the activity. We're not promoting smoking on school property. That's not what we're doing, but to have it be a misdemeanor, we thought was a bit extreme. We also increased the fine, which hasn't been changed in quite a while, from $50 to $125 for people that are over 17, minors, I'll call them children, I guess, who are 17 and younger. The fine's still the same, it's still a civil infraction, it's $50. Similar changes were made in 46.4 to Subpart C, where we're making the infraction a civil infraction instead of a misdemeanor, and we also had a similar fine increase for adults. The menacing statute, 46-43, a lot of, I know a lot, but there were some modifications there. Specifically, we removed some words that allow us to now prosecute for verbal threats and non-physical actions, which I think will help us prosecute, and I think it also helps law enforcement, the Claussen police, perhaps use this ordinance a little more frequently in the future. 46-41, assault and battery, we added a complete definition of simple assault, which was not in the previous ordinance. Subpart A is all new, and we also added, Subpart B, we added the addition, the last two lines of this being that the actual punishment is specified in the ordinance. I know we're trying to make this a little more user-friendly as far as knowing what the penalties are as you're looking at it, for anyone who goes on the Muni Code online that can see exactly what's a misdemeanor, civil infraction, and what's the maximum punishment is. So that's what we did here with Subpart B for that offense. And I believe that covers the ordinance update, repealing activities, and if anyone has any questions.
Well, would you speak a little bit more about the bike riding ordinance for our younger audience? What it was and what we are changing it to?
Well, I don't think we're changing it. I think we're repealing it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're repealing it and going to create a registry. And your police chief has come up with a proposed solution that may be very helpful, and that's an internet registration.
Are you talking about bike licenses?
It would be, I'll let the chief explain.
Right now, we sell bike licenses for $2 apiece, which means you would come to City Hub with the VIN number of your bike, and it's recorded in case your bike turns up missing. So what will be different now?
Madam Mayor, I'm in discussions. I actually started discussions with the manager up at Abel's Bike Shop up there, and there's a push now for a national registry of bikes. We started talking about how, we just had an auction and we sold 48 bicycles, and chances are, most of them were stolen from another community. We had no idea because nobody knows their serial number when they have a bike. I don't know the serial numbers of my bikes. Probably shouldn't say that, something rip 'em off. But anyhow, the registration then would, at the time, it would go from community to community. So we started, if we didn't do something with the national level, if we could maybe get together countywide level or area department level so that we had some consistency, so that if we picked up a bike that was registered in Royal Oak, we'd know, we could get ahold of the owner. If Royal Oak picked up a Claussen bike, they could do that with Troy, with Birmingham, with Madison Heights. So that's where kind of the direction we're kind of going toward is that kind of a registration instead of a regular local licensing. So anyhow, but that's in the preliminary stages right now. I'm gathering information on that, so.
So what piece are you repealing about the bikes?
That was the requirement in making it a penalty for not licensing your bike. Right now, it's making it a crime for someone to not register their bike. It's something we've never enforced since I've been here. We, you know, and the whole bicycle license thing, it just doesn't work, so people don't buy your licenses because it's not an effective system. So if we can have a push where we can have this kind of, you know, multi-community or multi-jurisdiction licensing, that would probably make more sense than to go in that direction.
And current ordinances, I understand it, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Current ordinances, I understand it, is written in such a way that Chief Anderson must inspect every bicycle in the city.
Yeah. Yeah, it does say that, the chief of police will inspect every license, or every bicycle.
So I'm going to speak to the scouts for a minute. So what happened when we became a city in 1940, rules were made, and the rules are called ordinances. One of the ordinances was that the police chief inspect all the bicycles, and all the bicycles are licensed. And that hasn't happened for many, many years. We don't enforce it, so we're taking it off the books or removing that ordinance or rule. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did have one more question, I'm sorry. You spoke about verbal threats, and forgive my ignorance on this, but, you know, what's the precedent as far as freedom of speech and threatening language?
Well, you're talking about the menacing statute and the specific language that was, actually, it was one word was removed because the ordinance only dealt with physical actions. Well, in a menacing situation, you can be using words and threatening words and violent words and intimidating words to put someone in imminent fear that they're going to be struck or battered in the way this language was in the statute, only dealt with physical, the word "physical" was taken out so we can encompass both physical and verbal. As far as protected speech, it was my understanding there is no protection for threatening to batter someone, which is the assault. The assault is the threat of imminent battery. That's always been, I shouldn't say always been, but it has been considered a criminal offense, either by local ordinance, state statute, et cetera. So I don't view that as a free speech issue in this context.
I would tend to agree with you. I just wondered what the courts decided on that.
To put things mildly, to put things mildly, as frowned upon, to threaten people with violence in the court system, so I'll just leave it at that, I guess.
Very good. Thank you.
I do have one more question. Tell me about backing into parking spaces.
It was my understanding that backing into parking spaces was an ordinance violation in the city, and it didn't really seem to make much sense to me when I was reviewing this with Harry Anderson and reviewing with John. I didn't really understand the purpose for it to begin with, and understand why. I guess maybe from a traffic flow situation, perhaps on Main Street or something like that, that was maybe the original intent, where people would stop and back into a space and maybe cause a traffic problem, but it's something that was my understanding hadn't been enforced forever, and I'll defer to Harry Anderson on that, but I don't think anyone, since I've been prosecuting in Claussen for, you know, the last year and four months or so, I've never seen this ticket, and I talked to Mr. Kingsup, and he's never seen this ticket or heard of this ticket being written. So it's just one of those things we addressed, and we just figured it was antiquated and it needed to be on the books anymore.
Right. I have a question, because in our parking lot here, we have signs that say, "Do not back into parking spaces," so that would remove those signs?
I think the manager should answer that.
I think they've been removed, haven't they?
They've been gone.
Have they been, are they gone?
Are they?
Yeah, they've been gone.
I hope so. I'd like to do a spot.
I was going to say, if you look in our parking lot this evening, I think there's probably half a dozen vehicles backed in this parking spot.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That wouldn't prevent us from putting up signs that say, "Do not back into parking spaces," I would assume.
Well, I guess the vehicles get bigger. It's so much easier to back in a spot than it is to pull in.
Yeah.
And so I think it's a lot safer to back in than it is to pull in.
Okay. All right, next item. Consideration of the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to repeal sections of the Claussen Code of ordinances because the offenses are no longer viable, or in the case of massage parlors, licensing of such a business is now regulated by the state of Michigan. And I believe most of the time, they're called spas now.
Yes, they are. They are.
Madam Mayor, I move the proposed ordinance to repeal the following sections of the Claussen Code of ordinances because of the offenses are no longer viable, or in the case of massage parlors, licensing of such a business is now regulated by the state of Michigan. Be entered into second reading and adopted.
Support.
Mr. Kingsup, just looking ahead in our agenda, it looks like you're going to speak to this during your attorney's report. Is that true?
Right, now, the massage.
Okay.
It's a proposed ordinance.
Okay.
And I just wanted to address why we changed it and the background.
So we're repealing ordinances tonight, correct?
Where you're repealing the ordinances, right.
Okay. Is there any reason to postpone repeal until?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
There was one, well, and I think that will be, no, with the appointments, so there's no comment that I have. I'll go into that at that time.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobz?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
The next item is second reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of ordinances again by adding a new section regarding mayor appointments. So this has been under discussion for a few years. What council elects to do is meet the applicants to our various boards, our planning board, our zoning board, or traffic board, and so that we will invite the applicant to an interview with council, and this adoption will make that official.
Madam Mayor, I move the proposed ordinance to amend the Code of ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 1, in general, by adding a new section 2-2 entitled, "Mayor Appointments be entered into second reading and adopted."
Support.
Any other comments or questions? Row call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobz?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
The next item is the repeal of another ordinance regarding the traffic and safety boards, and our chief of police, Harry Anderson, is here to present information to repeal the traffic and safety board.
Madam Mayor and council, I believe, yeah, I know, I sent you the report regarding the traffic and safety board. For years, we've struggled with having many people interested in the traffic and safety board. We haven't had a meeting in over a year. February 4th was our last meeting, because we only have three current members on it. And the last gentleman that had applied couldn't make it that night, and he has since passed away as well. So the thought is, is that we could accomplish the same things in this day and age. All of our laws, our traffic laws are based on traffic studies, and we pay a fee every year to the Transportation Improvement Association, TIA, who have engineers on staff. When we have a complaint or an issue brought up about traffic, I can forward that information onto TIA. They can study the area and give us a report from their engineers, talk about traffic volumes, talk about turning motions, talk about, you know, clear corners and such. Also, when we have issues with traffic complaints, they are first brought to the chief of police. My proposal would be that in the process and in the place of the traffic and safety board, we had the complaint brought forward to the police department, or wherever, it would be funneled to the police department. The chief would write up a report, have TIA's input on it, and then that report would be sent to council for your review and your end result of making a decision on the way that goes. Because the way it is, the traffic safety board is an advisory board. They don't have any powers to make decisions, so you would be relying then on the police department and TIA for your information to then recommend or direct us to correct the problem in a way.
And that's been the difficulty with the traffic board for many years, and why there's been a lack of members regarding the authority. I know members felt that TIA was the sole representative, and their opinions didn't count as much. Historically, the traffic and safety board had input when the traffic light changed at Elmwood and Crooks, input regarding stop signs and more. What would be the appeal process? If somebody's looking for, well, what's the appeal process now?
Well, I guess the appeal process, you always have, if I'm making a decision, your appeal process could be the city manager, who's my boss, if they don't think that they're getting an adequate answer. But if I can back up to the issues where people were kind of not felt like they were empowered, there's been a real push, and I think all of you have read the papers, where they're saying that, you know, you've got traffic laws that have to be justified. It's no longer like it once was at one time where home rule, you could say, you know what, I think this street should be a 25 mile an hour zone, and because it's home rule, I should be able to say it. Well, then you lose tickets if you don't have a study done, a traffic study, and go on, make a decision based on traffic science. So that's what offended some of the past board members, because they didn't agree with what we had to do by law to have enforcement stand. So that was our dilemma back then. But it's, you know, I think there are benefits to having a traffic and safety board, you know, and issues that you have, you can have, it gives you a sampling of the community to voice what's felt out of the community. I could bounce things off them and see, what do you feel about this? This topic came up, but it just seems ridiculous to keep having to adjourn a meeting because you don't have membership. I mean, that's just, that just seems ridiculous.
Right.
And things then start sliding by the wayside because you need to develop another process. And I think that's where we're at right now, is working through and getting that process going. And it may be some growing pains, but, you know, I think we can work together and get the process going so it's effective in addressing people's concerns and moving forward and getting resolution to traffic problems.
Okay. Thank you.
Point of clarification, now, somebody wants a stop sign, maybe, near their home. So they send you an email, they send the city manager an email, and then you?
They send it to me or whoever gets that complaint, whether it's council or me. I'm telling, that is a common request. People want stop signs. One of the biggest requests is I want a stop sign because I have speeding cars down my road, and I want to have a stop sign in the middle of the block because it's going to stop them.
Middle of the block?
Like if you have, like a middle of a long stretch of road.
Oh, I see.
Where you have a stop sign and it's going to, you know, slow down traffic. There's endless studies that show that that's not an effective way of slowing down traffic. That's where it is based on a traffic study, that if there's a request for a stop sign, that information can be forwarded, we look, I would work with the TIA, okay, check out this intersection, see where the, you know, we may have an issue there with it. Maybe there have been some requests that really are legitimate. Maybe you have a blind corner of some sort that you need to have a stop sign at it. Anyhow, we study it and see if there's warrants. You have to have warrants or reasons to have a traffic control device. And if there are warrants, but what we find quite often is there's another solution to the problem rather than a stop sign. If you, if you really, truth be told, when communities go through and do an overhaul of their stop signs, you would find that there's a lot of stop signs around the city that aren't warranted. But I really don't want to go down that road of starting to take out stop signs, because there's warrants that they have to have to be justified in the city. And that's one of the first things that goes in cities when they redo all of their traffic control devices, is they end up taking a lot of stop signs out, and they end up raising speed limits when they do that, because a lot of your speed limits, they have to be justified. If they're artificial, no one follows them, and no one follows them, you can write, you know, because people will travel at a speed that, 85th percentile, that's what it's based on. They do traffic studies to see what the 85th percentile of traffic is moving. Studies show that people will travel at a speed that is reasonable and safe, or at least 85% of them do, because of the surroundings. That's why, you know, you have things like, like on Main Street, the speed limit on Main Street used to be a lot faster. People used to travel down there. You choke the road down, people are slowing down, it's slowing traffic down, down there. It's traffic calming or congestion. But people drive at the, you know, if you have a wide open roadway, and you have, like if we were to set the speed limit on 14 mile road at 25 miles an hour, there's no way in heck you're going to have anybody doing 25 miles an hour out there. But at one time, we had, if you remember right, in the downtown area, we had the-
In all the traffic lights.
Yeah, the traffic lights, and we had the 25 mile an hour speed limit down along at 14 and Main area. No one traveled it. It's an artificial, it's not justified speed limit. But there are things that you can do it, you know, you can base a speed limit also on driveways, the number of driveways in an area. You can set a 25 mile an hour zone in a downtown, like where we have our downtown area, it can be a 25 zone based on the road frontage of the buildings. And that's generally when there's not a wide open lawn in front of them, it's, you know, the closer, the building's closer to the roadway. And if you have, there's a percentage of the business frontage that would be viewed as, it would be designated as a business district. And there's actually a study you have to do to designate an area a business district. You can't just say, "This is my business district, therefore, the speed limit's 25." It's got to fit a description that's according to the law. So a lot of this stuff is, and that was what was the frustration of a lot of our past members that thought that the board was no good, is that we just can't, we just can't come and do the home rule thing anymore. We have to justify our rules. So that's what kind of made people upset.
It sounds like, first, we need to get a policy and get it out there on the website and Facebook, and just explain to people what the process is.
Just say, without, absent the traffic safety board, this is the process, you know, and it would make the most sense for complaints to come to me, and then I would relay them to council when we had some kind of a resolution. You know, I guess, whenever you want me to relay it to you, but that would be my recommendation is, we received this complaint, this is the results of the study, here we go. So at least you're informed.
Thank you.
You'd be my traffic and safety board.
I remember back, probably 25, 30 years ago when I was on that. It was quite interesting. You learned a lot.
If there are topics, it can be a good board. If there are certain topics going on and certain, the evolution of the city, there's a lot of, it was pretty interesting when we were going through the whole downtown rebuild the traffic light issue, going through all of that with the rebuilding of 14 mile road. You know, we had the issue with Elmwood. That's stuff that, you know, where people were driving across Meyer Drive and, and doing away with that. There's, there's a lot of, a lot of hot topic things that it's good to have a Traffic and Safety Board to, to be able to run those ideas through. I, I'm just, I'm not saying that there's no use for a Traffic and Safety Board, I'm just saying we can't seem to fill it. So if, if it comes up later and we have this renewed interest and we have these people, then I don't know what it would take to bring it back. I mean, if there, if there is a need for it. But I think if we, like Councilwoman Woolley said, if we set up a policy, go forward, get the, get the information out there to the public on how they make that complaint, then we can go forward from there and make tweaks along the way when we have to, if something's not working.
So I got an email the other day from a resident who wanted to know who determines traffic lights and when they start blinking and when they do and when they are not operational.
Those, those are set by the road, County Road Commission, because they're, they're all tied.
All the traffic lights?
Yeah, because they're tied in, and quite, quite often your, your, your lights are, are set in accordance with, with other lo, lights, you know? So at certain times, there's, there's a blink, they're set by the county. We, we, we asked the county, we sent a, a, a letter into the County Road Commission, and then they send a crew out and do it. If, but, but they also look at the whole picture of the communities to the north of us, to the south, east and west, to see what that light sequence is.
And when they're, when the lights are changed, and I'm asking because the individual who sent me an email is blind, he's legally blind, and he wanted to know, if I'm out walking and I'm with my dog, I want to know when I can cross the street, you know, without, do I have to be home by 10 o'clock, 10:30? I mean, he was questioning crossing at 14 and, and, I think it was 14 and Bywood. He wanted to know, he said that it had been recently maybe switched from 10 o'clock to 10:30, or didn't know.
You know, and that's something I'm not familiar with, with that. I didn't, that didn't come across my desk. I can, if you send me his contact information, I can, I can get ahold of Rachel up at the, at the Road Commission and, and get an answer for it.
I asked him to forward the email to you, and he said that he would, obviously because he couldn't read it, he said that he would call, but he was going to call you.
Yeah, I have not received a phone call yet, but that would be something that we could find an answer to and, and get him that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now that it's public, either we're going to have an influx of applicants for the Traffic and Safety Board, or we'll move forward with the policy and process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, move the proposed ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances to repeal and restate in amended form certain sections involving appointments to boards, commissions or committees by the mayor and council as deleted further herein, be entered into second reading and be adopted.
Well, thank you for the motion. That is our next item. It's the, to repeal and restate in sections regarding appointments to boards. The language wasn't consistent, and this will clean up the language in that ordinance.
Support.
Yeah, if we deleted appointment power in these sections, the language wasn't consistent, and that's why we had to re, redraft them. Now, I direct your attention to the last section on page two. Division two Traffic and Safety Board. If it is your view to have that board terminated, then I would move that you amend this document to delete Division two and Section 7861.
I think it's early to do that. If we've just announced that we're looking to dissolve that board...
That's fine. I just brought that to your attention.
To hear what people might have to say about that, and then perhaps it might be two weeks or a month to, we haven't had anybody, yes, we need to go forward with the policy and process for that.
That's fine. Leave it in. Leave it in.
Do we go like six months or something, see how it goes? See if we gain more applicants?
I, I would prefer it a shorter time.
Three months?
Because it's been a good year.
I know.
Without applicants.
I know.
Yeah, three months would be a good time.
There could be issues that arise. You remember, it was last year, there was a therapy outfit on 15 mile road, and persons on Salford were complaining about the traffic and so forth. And that was a situation which, which the Traffic and Safety Board had some involvement. And that's not to say you may not have that same type of situation again. So there, it served itself well in, in attempting to resolve that issue.
Can we amend the ordinance to allow for this new process? You know, if there is not a Traffic and Safety Board in place, this will be the process that's followed, so that covers...
But we need to design a process first.
Right. I'm just saying, that's right. I'm wondering if that's the direction we move, that we don't necessarily abandon the Traffic Safety Board altogether, that we add a layer as a safeguard when there isn't enough people for a quorum on that board.
Well, to get it going, I think what you can do is direct administration to report back to you in, in maybe three or four months on a process. And that gives you a timeframe to determine in that period whether or not there's any interest in preserving the board. If not, then you have a policy presented to you for consideration.
We could repeal it at that time.
And you could repeal it at that time and adopt the process. I'm just suggesting that you can have that ongoing effort going forward without implementation, but that's your call.
It's a good idea.
I support the motion that's on the table.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to direct administration to begin the process of planning a policy while we wait any Traffic and Safety Board applications. We'll review this again in July. Three months from, about three months from this day is going to be July 4th. Do we meet on July 3rd in that case?
No, July 5th.
July 5th. So we'll, we'll hear about that on July 5th then. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Row call, please.
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
The last ordinance amendment proposal. So looking at the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend the Fire Department Pension Board of Trustees.
Go back up.
We need to go back up. We're not on the second to last one.
No, I think we're on 12.
We did 12. We just did 12.
We include 11 and 12.
Okay. But 11 was just a discussion, 12, how we made the motion and met, seconded.
Got it.
So...
13.
Yes. Back to the Fire Pension Board. So looking at the following proposed amendment to the pension plan, that would allow one of the trustees to be a deferred vested or retired member of the system. Right now, there are three, and it looks like going down to two. So here's, here's my question. What does it mean deferred vested? Is that an active member?
It's an inactive member, but deferred vested just means they're vested in the pension, but they're no longer an active member. So, and in this case, it would allow someone who leaves the department to still be considered as a trustee for the pension board, because they still have a vested interest. So deferred vested just means they're not able to collect yet on the pension, they have to reach this certain age. They met the years of service, so they're vested, but they haven't met the age yet. But it would allow them to be on the trustee board.
And the retired member of the system, would that be considered a conflict of interest if they're determining what happens with the pension as an active recipient of the pension?
No. It would, if there were any issues that related to existing retirees, that individual could recuse themselves from a vote, but it is very rare for that occurrence to happen. But again, I think if anyone were interested as a retiree on the pension board, if there were any decisions made impacting, of course, they would have to be cleared by council as well, they would, could recuse themselves from making a decision, in essence, to increase their own pension.
Is, is that in the proposed ordinance?
Yes.
That they would be recused if it was a conflict of interest for a retiree?
It's not in their...
To vote on the pension?
It's not in the ordinance, but the attorney, who's extremely sharp, would not allow that to happen. Would not allow a vote of someone who, like I said, in essence, could vote themselves an increase. And all that stuff goes back to the department and then eventually through to council, but our attorney Cynthia wouldn't, would not allow someone to basically vote themselves an increase, so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move the proposed ordinance to amend the Clause and Code of Ordinances, Chapter two Administration, Administration, Article seven, Boards and Commissions and Authorities, Division three, Fire Department Pension Board of Trustees, which clarifies the Board of Trustees be entered into the second reading and adopted.
Support.
Any other comments or questions? Row call, please.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
The next few items concern proclamations. The first is a proclamation declaring the month of April as National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Claussen. Carehouse of Oakland County partners with community organizations and agencies to offer programs and services aimed at preventing child abuse and neglect, knowing that effective programs succeed because of the involvement and partnerships created among schools, social service agencies, religious and civic organizations.
Madam Mayor, move the proclamation declaring the month of April 2017 as National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Claussen be approved.
Support.
Any other comments? Row call, please.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
And Mayor Loobes?
Yes. The next item is a proclamation recognizing April 9th through 15th as National Library Week in the city of Claussen. With the vital service that our libraries provide to the community, this proclamation will recognize all librarians and their importance to the communities that they serve. And I commonly refer to the Blair Memorial Library as our cultural center. In recognition of this week, our library will have pause to read on April 19th from 4:00 to 5:30. A bookmark contest and their annual book sale will take place from April 22nd through 29th. I do, our library director is here. We do have the actual proclamation soon. We'll see what council does, if they approve it. Would you come up and get the proclamation? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move the proclamation recognizing April 9th through the 15th, 2017, as National Library Week in the city of Claussen be approved.
Support.
Any other comments or questions?
I did have a question once our librarian comes up and accepts the proclamation.
Do you want to vote first or a question afterwards?
Question afterwards.
Okay. Row call, please.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
And Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
And Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
And Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
So thank you to the Women's Club, City Council and everyone who lives in Claussen. We do recognize April 24th as the Federation Day and congratulate the Women's Club on their 49th anniversary.
Also, Madam Mayor, I'd like to see that the girls do support the Lions Club quite a bit with the car show and things of that nature, so all the money stays in the community pretty much. So thank you, girls. I don't know where they're at tonight.
Yeah, they've done some wonderful work with the Goodfellows as well, and I really appreciate it of, of what they've done to help each year.
Good. Thank you. The last proclamation declares Friday, April 28th as Arbor Day in the city of Claussen. For over 25 years, we've been named a Tree City USA by National Arbor Day. As part of this observance, we encourage all citizens to celebrate by planting and caring for trees in recognition of April 28th Arbor Day.
Your Honor, I move the proclamation designating Friday, April 28th, 2017, as National Arbor Day, and that as a commitment to our community observance of Arbor Day, we encourage all citizens to celebrate by planting and caring for trees in Claussen be approved.
Support.
Row call, please.
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
We're moving towards the end of our agenda. The next item is approving the bills to be paid in the next two weeks.
Madam Mayor, pay the bills.
Support.
Any questions on the bills? Row call, please.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
City Attorney's Report?
Yes, I have a couple of matters. First, I would like to address the house on Bauman. I received a letter from the attorney yesterday, and he indicated that they have interviewed or entertained three offers on that house. There's no consummation yet of any sale. He was surprised that the sale, for sale sign was turned, was down, and has made efforts to have it up again. So apparently...
For over twenty-five years, we've been named a Tree City USA by National Arbor Day. As part of this observance, we encourage all citizens to celebrate by planting and caring for trees in recognition of April 28th Arbor Day.
Your Honor, I move the proclamation designating Friday, April 28th, 2017, as National Arbor Day, and that as a commitment to our community observance of Arbor Day, we encourage all citizens to celebrate by planting and caring for trees in Claussen be approved.
Support.
Row call, please.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbrich?
Yes.
We're moving towards the end of our agenda. The next item is approving the bills to be paid in the next two weeks.
Madam Mayor, pay the bills.
Support.
Any questions on the bills? Row call, please.
Mayor Loobes?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Woolley?
Yes.
City Attorney's Report.
Yes, I have a couple of matters. First, I would like to address the house on Baumann. I received a letter from the attorney yesterday, and he indicated that they have interviewed or entertained three offers on that house. There's no consummation yet of any sale. He was surprised that the for-sale sign was turned, was down, and has made efforts to have it up again. So apparently, they are actively trying to pursue a sale of that residence.
John, what's the big orange sticker on the front window?
I have no idea, I can't explain that, because I haven't seen it. I mean, I heard that the door was unlocked, and I know someone went over there from the city and checked, and the door was secure. So I don't know if the city posted the sticker or someone else did, so I can't answer that. You had before you proposed ordinance, it deals with the, not the licensing, but the registration of massage therapists. And the background on this, I'll be very brief, but you don't know, but because you're too young. But I remember that there was a period of time in my life when there was a tawdry enterprise involving massages that was rather illicit. And at that time, I can remember the police chief and I being, going over to Utica and talking to a detective over there, who was a statewide expert on massage, these kind of massages, which involved importing women and exploiting them across state lines. I mean, it was a national organization. So a lot of the communities developed a very detailed massage ordinance to prohibit these type of activities, and it was cumbersome, laborious, but it worked, because we would have contacts by some massage people that wanted to open a business, and when they found out about the process they had to go through, they went elsewhere. Fortunately, Governor Granholm and the organization of massage therapists, and I'm talking about all different kinds of massage therapy, which is therapeutic in many instances and very relieving of pains and aches and good for your health, organized and convinced the governor to adopt legislation to license massage therapists. And that act was done in 1908, nineteen eighty-nine, and restated, done in 2008, and adopted by Governor Granholm in 2009. The act is very, very detailed on licensing. It is a rigorous process, and there is no question the state took over control of the licensing of this profession, which is a very excellent profession now and quite different from before. However, while the act itself says municipalities cannot license, there is a legitimate interest in, from a planning standpoint, where they are. And our planner and I have developed a registration of people. So if you're licensed here, you're just registered as well, so we know that it's in a building, that either you're connected with a business, i.e. beauty parlor, spa, whatever, or, or not. If it's not, that the facilities at least are there from a health standpoint and a safety standpoint. So we developed this ordinance to do the registration, and I wanted to express the purpose of it, so that it's emphasized that it coincides with the state law, which recognizes the validity and importance of this occupation, and to emphasize the continuing importance of that in this city, and having the registration there, so that they're in a facility that is complimentary to the occupation that they're performing. Most of them are connected with spas, hair salons, barber shop, well, they're not called barber shops now, I don't know what they're called, because I don't go to them, but they're plentiful, and, and so this, this is what the ordinance is for and the purpose. And it's quite short, believe me, and it is designed to do that. The other one was several pages long. So that's what this ordinance is. I just wanted to present it to you for your input, whether you wanted to get into that, because there are some registration problems that can arise. For instance, if I just got licensed to the state, and I'm working with Mark's Salon, Hair Salon, which, which is also licensed, I, I shouldn't really have to register at all in that. I should maybe fill out an application, I'm connected with that group, and that's fine. But if I'm starting out alone, then it becomes a little different. Then I have to describe where I'm going to have my business and what I'm going to do. Many of them are connected with a business. Those people who have come in under the act are connected with another business. So in adopting this, you have to look at what are the fees you're going to charge? I mean, I think the fee they charge now is seventy-five dollars, which would be totally ridiculous for a registration. I mean, it really would.
Why?
Because it's too, it's too high, there's not enough paperwork involved in that.
Yeah.
And it's punitive, and, and, you know, I'm against that type of approach.
Excellent.
But a more realistic one, I think you ought to have. So, you know, I just presented this to you, you want to noodle it around and think about it, and we can discuss it at some other time, that's fine. I just wanted to put it before you, that's what we're thinking about, that's what Greg and I, our planner and I have talked about, and Mike Smith and I have talked about it as well, that line.
Thank you. I will mull it over.
I have a question about that. Are there other private businesses that we require registration of in the city?
I can't answer that directly, I don't know if Michelle knows that.
What was the question?
Do we require registration of any other private businesses within the community?
We, we, we register liquor licenses. That's kind of one that I compare it to, because they're licensed at the state level. We register them to make sure that they're, you know, they have the proper licenses, and with that, when we do more inspection, obviously. There's, you used car dealerships have a registration process. The massage therapy was a little bit different because of the, the fact that they weren't licensed with the state.
Right.
There was no licensing process at all, so it was kind of our way to make sure that they did certain things to be within the law. This has come up probably over the past year or so, because I think the state was a little bit, they put the, they passed the law, but they didn't have a process yet, so imagine that. So they passed the law, but they still weren't licensing the massage businesses yet, because there wasn't a process to do it. I think now that it's happening, we've had people come into our office, still trying to abide by what our ordinances say. I do think it's a good idea to register them, so that we at least know where they're at. Currently, it's kind of one of those unenforceable things, the laws that are there, that who is going to make sure, I mean, I drive down, down the roads, and you see massage in almost every building, you know, that has hair salon or whatever, it could be a chiropractor, let's say even, and a lot of them are advertising massage, and we, we had no idea that they were there. So I think that it, I think it's a good practice, maybe, to have a list of who is working in our city and make sure that they are licensed appropriately, so.
Kind of to branch off on Matt's question, so what makes a nail tech that's contracting space in a hair salon any different than a massage therapist doing that in a nail salon?
I think that, well, from, I can speak from what the past guidelines were, there was a lot of health-related certifications required to be a massage therapist. I don't know if that's required of nail techs, I've, I'm not-
It is.
I'm not seeing that.
They're licensed very similarly at this point, I mean, the state boards and testing, and... So, so when you're sub, when you're, I guess I'm looking at John's kind of thing, are you going to be subleasing space, or you're essentially renting space of another business, while some nail techs do that, and, you know?
And the way that ordinance currently read, or the way that it worked, was that it had to be a, it had to be a certain percentage of, it couldn't be more than a certain percentage of the business in order to be in the business, because it was a way for massage therapists to come in and work under a different name, maybe to avoid the process of opening a shop. And I don't think we were trying to make it difficult, I think it was just because there was no guidelines in place. I, I think that the health part of it is just a portion of it, I don't have it in front of me, there was, it was like a, I don't know how many pages, John, it was probably a fifteen-page document that we required them to fill out, like there was criminal background, there was all of these things that were required. I don't know that that's ever been required of nail, nail techs. I think it's because of the type of, you know, therapy that it was, or what they're doing.
I guess, my noodling is, why, if the state has now licensed and been very specific on who gets a license and who doesn't, which is similar with hair, you know, hair techs and nail techs, why are, is the city of Claussen going to handle a massage business any different than when we would handle other professions that are licensed at the state level?
Well, I'll just throw this little tidbit out there, that I can think that could be a problem, is let's say that there is somebody operating as a massage therapist in a business that's not licensed. I mean, I, I think there has to be some enforcement, obviously, but let's say that people, that someone didn't go through all of that was required at the state level, and they came in and opened a business. We, we would have a list of those that have registered their license with us, and I, I agree with John, it doesn't have to be a lot of, a lot of money, it's not, it's not, I think we're charging fifty dollars right now to do that registration, and that's just because the ordinance had a two-part registration, so we're using the second part of it as the registration, but it doesn't even have to be, it could be twenty-five dollars, or it could be ten dollars, but it needs to be something to, so that they're required to come in and make that list. Then we know, and the planner, I know, John, I missed the meeting that you discussed this, but the, what's happening are these businesses are moving into other businesses, it may or may not be allowed, depending on what they're doing. So it's just kind of a way for us to know that they're there, because when it's not a, the whole, it's not the business that's in there, I, I'm not sure all the, you know, all the problems that might come in with the actual zoning requirements and so forth. So I think that when we get these, these in, we could present them to our planning department, to say we've gotten this massage licensed, registered at this business, and make sure that it's compatible with our ordinances. I, I see a lot of different loose ends that could be tied up with that. The nail salons, they come in specifically, and they get a site plan for that business, for that building, you know, currently. And if it seemed if it was a massage therapist coming in, they would, they would have to go to site plan review, or if the building was already zoned, then they, then they get the okay and a CBO to go in there.
See, I guess for me-
It's just a process, I think.
Right, because a hair salon is, the requirements of being able to do pedicures and nails is completely different than somebody being able to do hair, and the requirements within that building or that space are very different from a licensing standpoint. And so I'm kind of, do I don't, maybe we need to require, you know, somebody that's doing manicures and pedicures in a different business, because it's kind of, for me, it's the same concept, licensing is licensing, if they're going through the state, and you need to know if that business, or do we just say all, you know, hair and nail is, from our ordinance standpoints and planning, the same?
I can't answer that enough.
Well, that's, I mean, that's why this is presented, to provoke some dialogue like this. And I think that, again, noodle it some more, I will also talk to the planner more in detail to get to the planning considerations that lie behind this as well, and then we can address it at the appropriate time, which is your determination.
Thank you. Anything else under the City Attorney's Report?
You got to go into closed session on a memo that I think I sent you, Paul.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
City Managers' Report.
I did have three items, just updating. We've had some calls, especially after the windstorm. Curbside yard waste pickup begins again tomorrow, so if you put out bags and containers with stickers on them, they will be picked up by Tringali Curbside tomorrow. I did want to mention, too, with the severe weather awareness week, the, we'll have another opportunity to let people know this before it happens, but just to get it out there, because we always get calls on this day, they have a special alarm testing on April 19th at one o'clock, be the middle of the week, so just to let people know, on that date, there'll be a testing of the alarm system. And then just wanted to let people know, there are pamphlets available for severe weather awareness, emergency, recommendations of emergency materials and supplies, those are available here at City Hall. And then a reminder, our first budget workshop begins a week from tonight, next Tuesday, here at City Hall at 7:00 PM. That's all I have.
We have three budget workshops scheduled, April 11th, April 19th, and April 25th. Do you want to talk a little bit about the phone conference we participated in last week regarding a promotion company?
Yeah, there, Penny and I had a conference call with a company called Modern Business. It's a program broadcast on, I think there were three national networks, and then they also give some local exposure, and B-roll, as he called it. I think the mayor and I were both a little taken aback by the cost, it's nearly twenty thousand dollars for the city to participate, and all it does is guarantee you a three-to-five-minute spot on the national, I think, one time each, and then local, a little bit more locally, and then you get the B-roll and a production to put on your website and video, so it did seem, I think we both thought the expense probably didn't justify the moving forward with it, but we did tell them we'd bring it forward to council and get your thoughts, and I think they're following up tomorrow, so unless there's an overwhelming desire to spend twenty thousand dollars for advertising, we don't think we'll get a whole lot of bang from, we can tell them, thanks, but no thanks.
Thank you. Any other business?
I want to ask Mark one thing. Corner Masoyt and Main Street, the business going in there? I don't know what price you're bringing up to planning commissioner, what have you, when it's the landscape, you're going to be done? Because that stuff, the building looks nice, everything looks nice, but that stuff looks pretty crappy right now.
They've received, I know at least one notice, I believe Jim's been in contact with them, and engineering's been in contact with them. The issue they have there is they need to grade. The building itself is low, and they're going to have issues with retention. I know they were given ideas to, to maintain retention, so that they didn't have an issue with water standing around and near the building, but I will follow up with Jim, he's on vacation this week, but I'll also follow up with Harry, because I think a couple of weeks ago at our weekly meeting, that property was brought up, they were given a timeframe to do the landscaping around the building, and I'll check to see if that's expired yet. But yeah, it's, it's getting warm enough now, they need to do something.
Exactly. I, I can't figure it's high, so high, the landscaping, the sidewalk, it's dumping right into the building, I mean, that is like crazy.
Yeah, I think in hindsight, they probably would have been better off leveling the whole building, rather than doing what they did to save the footprint.
Definitely.
And then building it higher, because that is an area that, they're going to have issues. They were, they were given some options to avoid the problem, I, I don't know that they're going to follow through on those options, but they do at least need to do the grading. I agree, the building looks really nice, but unfortunately, they're going to have some issues with drainage.
Excellent.
Okay, on to new business. I want to draw your attention to what's on the table in front of us. It's Oakland Schools Technical Campus Southeast Welding. So that's here for a reason. Our Parks and Rec, particularly Norman Vale, have worked closely with O-Tech now to build, to bring decorative bike racks to Claussen, sounds like we're going to start with one. So our high school kids who are at O-Tech have designed a bike rack, requires a little bit of modification to it, and that's something we'll be able to see at Claussen City Park then. Did I miss anything? Would you like to add anything? Yes.
As Penny said, I'm Norm Valenti, and part of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and per the request of the council to make some bike racks as a board, we decided that we'd look into possibly having one of the local tech schools do this, and Oakland was the only one that came back and responded, and their students are seniors, Mr. Fox is one of the primary designers of the- Mr. Fox is one of the primary designers of the bike racks. They're going to make 12 bike racks with different designs, not like this. We'll have some trees or flowers or a bicycle. And they'll have like three or six on one side separated so that you could pull bikes in between and chain them up. So, kind of falls into the ordinance about having bikes stolen and that if you chain them up, they don't get stolen. They're going to paint them different colors, and they're hoping to have them done with the council's permission to go forward with this. Our board will pursue the completion of it.
I love the idea of more bike racks. That's exactly what we're looking for, and to be able to use the skills of our high school seniors is icing on the cake.
Be nice to give them a letter of recommendation they can put on their resumes when they go out to do work.
Of course. Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, we go ahead with this. Could we not have some of the businesses in Claussen maybe sponsor each one, have their name put on it? I mean, it is a metal, so it's going to last a while. Is that legit?
Sure it is.
Okay. Foot for thought.
Okay. Okay, other business. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April 5th, is Dine for Dollars at Montage Grill on behalf of the Alliance for Communities for Healthy Living, which also sponsors our fan group. Saturday, April 8th, is our Easter egg hunt at Claussen City Park. Begins at 10:00 AM. I want to emphasize it ends at 10:03. It's very quick. The Easter bunny will be, will arrive about 9:30 for pitchers, so bring your camera, bring a basket. We'll determine Saturday morning whether the hunt will actually occur in Claussen Park or on the football field. Right now, the park has large pooled areas of water, so we'll see what happens Saturday. Now, I know the remainder of this week is a rainy week, but Saturday is destined to be sunny. April, we talked about our budget meeting. Next week, on Wednesday, April 12th, the Detroit Institute of Arts will begin their art installation at Ten Places in Claussen, so that's exciting. The art reproductions will be in Claussen for three months before they're moved to another city. So, you'll see, you'll see the art installation here at City Hall, at the library, at Hunter, at Claussen City Park, and six local businesses. We will be scheduling a bicycle route to view the art reproductions. DIA Away, the traveling museum, will be on-site at our Farmer's Market July 2nd, and DIA staff will be at the Farmer's Market with a variety of historical crafts, and I'll keep you posted on that. April 14th, Trinity Lutheran Church is hosting a crosswalk, walking down 14-mile on the sidewalk, holding a cross in honor of Good Friday. So, when you see multitudes of people walking, you'll have heard of it first here. The police department is hosting their annual Bow-a-thon on April 15th. So, registration closes this week. If you're interested in bowling, turn your registration in to our police department or one of our officers, Kelly Baus. April 28th, the Chamber is hosting their dinner and auction, which is a popular event and one of the ways they raise money for scholarships. So, that's what I have for April. Anybody else? Anything else? All right, the floor is open for public discussion. All right, the floor is closed for public discussion. What generally happens at this point is we adjourn. We don't adjourn now because we're going into closed session. Following closed session, we'll return to this room and adjourn the meeting. If there are any particular directions that come up at that time, that's when we would direct administration, but there is no adjournment because we're going into closed meeting. So, I want to thank you all for coming. See you in two weeks.